Welcome to the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum for the upcoming primary election on August 30th. I'm Barbara Lutrell, a member of the League of Women Voters of Greater Verde Valley, and I'll be your moderator for this forum. Our timekeeper is Lori Rubenstein, and other members of the League will be available to collect questions from those of you that are in the audience. All you have to do is raise your hand. I think if you don't have cards already, they'll make sure you get a card and a pencil. And we have Mary Gassoey, Ellie Bauer, and Nita Nedleton, who is outside waving down traffic to come in this direction. Okay?[120.11][120.11](laughter) Thank you. But they will be available to take questions. This forum is for candidates who are running for the Clarkdale City Council, and the purpose of the forum is to inform and educate ourselves about the candidates. Doug, are you running?
I am running.
But you are unopposed. Okay, so he doesn't have to be on the hot seat. Our candidates this evening are, from my left, Tommy Nestor, Richard Danert, and Scott Buckley. And welcome, candidates. Thank you for being here. The format that we're following for this evening is that the candidates will introduce themselves with a two-minute opening statement. We encourage you to talk about your reason for running and your qualifications, and what you see as the biggest challenge facing the city council or Clarkdale, and how you would resolve it. I don't know if you can get all that in in two minutes, but if you can't, we will have time in the question period as well to address questions. Then we have a couple of questions that the League of Women Voters has prepared to ask each of the candidates. Then we will open it up to you in the audience for any questions that you might have, so please jot them down, and Mary, Ellie, or Nita will pick them up. And each of those, you will have a minute to answer, or we'll see how it goes, I mean, because we have time. And then you will each have two minutes for your closing statement following that. We're scheduled from 6:30 to 8:00, but we'll go as long as is necessary so that everyone is satisfied that you've had an opportunity to really state your case. So with that in mind, and we do have a few more folks coming, welcome, come in, come, sit down. If you have any questions you want to ask the candidates, just fill them out on a card. Okay, so let's begin, and I'm not sure who drew number one, two, or three, but we offer you the opportunity to do your two-minute opening statement, and Lori is ready to begin timing you. She'll show you a one-minute sign, a 30-second sign, and a stop sign, which means finish your sentence. Not a run-on sentence, but just finish your sentence, okay? All right, who was number one?
I was.
Okay, Scott Buckley, would you please begin?
Absolutely. Hi, I'm Scott Buckley. I am running for town council here in Clarkdale. I am currently on the town council. I have currently two businesses in the town of Clarkdale, and three children at the Clarkdale Jerome School, and a family living in Clarkdale, so obviously my biggest concerns are the school, business, and business growth in the town of Clarkdale, and also water conservation and the Verde River, and the continued free-flowing of the Verde River. And I don't think I need a whole two minutes.
I'm sorry, what was it?
I don't think I need a whole two minutes. Well, I guess some of the biggest concerns facing Clarkdale would definitely be water conservation, and also agriculture with the use of reclaimed water, the use of re- reclaimed water, if that's a word. And yeah, thank you guys for having me this evening.
Thank you very much. Scott, who drew number two?
I did.
Okay, Richard?
Thank you, Barbara, and thanks to the League of Women Voters for organizing this event. I'm glad to see that we have some turnout, and I think it's a little bit bigger than the last time we had one of these, four years ago, actually. My name is Richard Danert, and I am currently serving my second term on the Clarkdale Town Council. I was originally elected in 2018. I'd like to serve another term because I enjoy the work. It's a very good council. It's a group of people who all care about the town. Nobody has an axe to grind or an agenda other than the welfare of the citizens of Clarkdale. So it's a real good working environment. I don't know if you all saw it, but just recently there was an article in The Independent about economic development and the economy of the Verde Valley, and one part of that was, I believe, written by Jody Filardo, who is with the town of Clarkdale, and it's titled "Clarkdale Effectively Delivers More With Less." And it was really a well-written article, and I think it was, it points out a lot of things that Clarkdallians can be happy about, and that one of those is the efficiency of the town government. It is being run now with fewer people than we had in 2006 on the town, on the town staff. So we've made a lot of progress, we have a lot of good projects going, we're getting a great reputation all around the state, and I'd like to continue the job. I think the biggest issue facing the town is that staff, because the staff is excellent, and unfortunately, a considerable portion of it is nearing retirement age, and the council is going to have to be very involved with hiring the next generation of staff for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Terry?
I'm Tom Nestor, and I'm one of those retiring Clarkdale employees. I retired last July, been retired for a year. I was a police officer with the town of Clarkdale for 19 years. I have a lovely wife sitting in the back over here, been married for 36 years this year. We've been a part of Clarkdale for 19 years since I retired from the military. My concerns for the town is that, like you said, water conservation, it's deep in my heart. I'd like to see the sewer get up in Black Hills for once before my house. The septic tank's 40 years old now, so, I mean, as it gets there, I'd like to see some of that turnaround become reclaimed water, instead of me just using it in a septic tank, having it pumped out and drained. I have no ulterior motives. I have worked with the town, like I said, 19 years, 18 years, 11 months, and some odd days. I round it off, so I don't want to be politically correct and get in trouble. Thank you. And I love the town. I've been here, I've watched it grow, I've watched it change, and it was part of it for the 19 years, and I feel homesick and want to come back and do more. And thank you for your opportunity to do this.
Thank you very much. Tom, I just want to point out that Scott Buckley and Richard Danert are on the ballot with their names, having gathered the signatures, and Tom Nestor is running as a write-in candidate, so you won't see his name on the ballot. It requires a write-in. Okay, we have a couple of questions from the League to get us started, but in the meantime, I encourage you to think about any questions you have for the candidates, either specifically or for all of them to address, and, you know, Mary, or Ellie, or Nita will be happy to take the questions, and then I'll ask them. Okay, so at this point, the first question that I have is, how would you describe the role of a town council member? And I believe you've had these questions in the email that was sent to you. So, Tom, why don't we start with you, and you have two minutes to speak.
Okay, you have to be actively involved in the town. You have to get out and talk to the citizens and the neighbors. Since we don't have precincts here, you're kind of a representative of everyone in the town, not just your home area. Like, I live up in Black Hills, and we have no representation here since Wiley retired, Councilman Wiley retired. You've got to attend the functions that you're invited to. We've invited people for years, and they've never showed up to some of the veterans associations. But we need to be out there, be focused on the town, be focused on our citizens of this town. And that's the only way to do it, is like I'm doing my campaign, I'm going door-to-door, walking, shaking hands. I don't believe in the signs that enforce the political sign law for too many years. So I have no signs, you're not going to see any probably, and that's the main involvement, I really believe, about a council member, is that you have to be involved with your community.
Okay. Thank you very much. Tom, Richard?
Yes, well, the role of a council member, I believe, is to educate themselves as much as they can about the operations of the town, to be a decision-maker sometimes when it comes to certain policies and certain decisions that the council has to make. But the most important thing is that the town council hires the town manager, and the town manager is the most important employee we have, although they're all important. And if the council can't find a good manager, or doesn't recognize one when they see it, that can be a problem. So I think it's really important for the members of the council to be able to make those decisions about the big picture and leave the day-to-day work to the professionals.
Okay, thank you very much. Scott?
Yeah, I think, well, the biggest thing in being a town council member is definitely doing your homework and your research, and not just looking at the short-term effects of decisions, but the long-term effects it's going to have on the town as a whole and the people in the town. Definitely listening to the citizens of the town and what they want. You know, Clarkdale doesn't have a huge turnout from the public to our meetings, so getting out and actually talking to people and getting other people's opinions, not just forming your own opinions about specific agenda items, I think, is very important. And definitely doing your research on the agenda items, and again, not just thinking about the short term, but also the long term of the town.
Okay, thank you very much. And the second question is, what do you see as the role of Clarkdale in the Verde Valley? Scott, do you want to start that?
Sure. Clarkdale's, in some ways, I think, were really cutting-edge. I was kind of just thinking about it today, and I don't actually remember why. But it seems like we, well, we do a lot more with a lot less in Clarkdale, and I guess that is what Jody Filardo said, so I don't want to quote exactly what she said. But we have a dedicated town crew and a dedicated town staff, and I think we have a dedicated council, and I think we have dedicated citizens. We have a lot of citizens that are very interested in the town of Clarkdale. So, yeah.
Okay. Richard, what do you see as the role of Clarkdale in the Verde Valley?
Well, Clarkdale is a place where a lot of innovation happens. And, you know, to take, for an example, the rooftop rain recovery system that was built at the Clarkdale Clubhouse, nobody does that, but it works. And these days, we have plenty of water in our tanks, I think. But it was a way for us to get that landscaping started there without using potable water, and as we, so the town actually sets a good example, and it encourages people to conserve water by projects like that. We also were successful in pushing through, finally, after many, many years, the new wastewater treatment plant, which was, before we fixed it, it was creating B-water, which isn't really very usable for anything, and now it produces A-plus water, and we're thinking of creative ways and innovative ways to use that water. So I think the use of the Verde River at Clarkdale, here's a thing that passed us through town, and nobody had ever bothered to figure out whether we could use it. There just weren't any formal ways to approach it, to get there. And so by creating the two-river access points, and by allowing outfitters to provide services to people on those stretches, we've created not only a great recreation area, but a new business, a couple of new businesses, actually. So I think innovation in ways that, you know, doing things that people hadn't thought of.
Terrific, thank you very much. And Tom, what do you see as the role of Clarkdale in the whole Verde Valley?
Clarkdale's been a leader almost in everything in this valley for the 20 years I've been Goes back to the work on the building. It goes to, we were the first one to take a reduction in pay, reduced hours, from the town managers sitting there deciding to do that, get the council's approval to do it in the entire state, and led to not reducing or doing a rift, you know, reduction in force of employees except the two, which we're close to leaving anyway. It leads the valley in the river access points, and it does a great thing down there. There's minor complaints about the noise, which the town immediately jumped on and fixed. The town was innovative with the, and allowed the roundabouts to come, the four roundabouts. I know a lot of people don't like them, but they have reduced the traffic accidents on 89A since they came in. Basically, you have no left turns anymore, it's all right turns. The town foresaw this and made that change. The town has changed its speed on Broadway through a conjunction with the police department, Cottonwood Police Department, and reduced the speed on that road. So they're staying ahead in everything they do, and that's all but as a gale, you know, and the council. I'll tell you, I sat there and watched it for 19 years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have two questions so far from the audience, so if you have something, please just raise your hand and/or write it down. What could you and the town do to encourage local residents to use our merchandise and services, or to use merchandise and services from local Clarkdale businesses? So what can you and the council do more to encourage local residents to shop here and use services from local Clarkdale businesses? Would someone like to start?
I'll start.
Okay.
Seven years ago, when I got on the council, and I think it was probably our first strategic planning session, and we were talking to the Community Development Department about what we were going to do in the next year, and I asked the question, a question about economic development. And apparently, that had not been a priority before. But since then, the staff has really put in an incredible number of hours and provided some terrific expertise in support of developments like the Downtown Business Association, in support of the events that we have so frequently here in Clarkdale. Everybody loves our concerts in the park. Everybody comes here for the Fourth of July and Halloween, and it takes the cooperation and the dedication of the town staff and a lot of volunteers to make those things happen. So that's one way in which we've worked on economic development. But another way is just being friendly to people who come in and ask a question about building a house, or a business, or whatever, and making sure that the staff that we, that those people meet are providing a service, not a barrier, to whatever the project is that they might be coming and talking about. So it's just real business-friendly, and I don't think it always had that reputation.
Scott, or would you like to add something to that?
Sure. Yeah, I've always, you know, in having two Main Street businesses here in Clarkdale, I've always said that if you give people a reason to come to Clarkdale, they're going to come to Clarkdale. And I think a few of us merchants downtown got together and started the Downtown Business Alliance, and the town has worked really well with the business alliance as far as tables and chairs and police force, and allowing street closures so we could throw these sort of street festivals. Again, I think adding more to the 89A corridor, I know the Dollar General's been a huge impact in my life. It saved tremendous amount of time and gas and having to drive to Cottonwood, so I think opening that area up to more businesses like Dollar General, possibly a pharmacy, banks, stuff like that, giving the residents more of an option to shop in Clarkdale and use local merchants in Clarkdale versus having to go to Cottonwood and providing some of those businesses.
Okay, thank you. Tom, would you like to comment on this?
Again, the town has grown so much in the past 20 years that I've lived here, and, you know, never would I ever believed a Dollar General would be here, but somebody went out and solicited it. They saw a goal, they brought it in. You see it, it's not full all the time, but it will. The family dollar in Cottonwood on the same road did not work out. The town takes so much care and concern in trying to help. 20 years ago, it didn't as much, you know, but lately and today, they help all people come to town, build buildings, to help with the houses, you know. The biggest thing that people I talk to talk about is trying to get rid of the brown water. The town is trying to get rid of that brown water that's at the end of the street where you live. They're not sitting on their cans, they're really trying to make it better, and all the citizens that know see that. The town is out working with the school, have the best relationship they've had in years with our school. We only go K through A, but this is the greatest school there is in this valley. You have, I don't know, 150 students from Cottonwood going to Clarkdale schools, at least, and that was two years ago. Cindy might know more, but she still runs out there. I mean, you have to get out in direct traffic as a school resource officer to get them through there safely. The town is very innovative in trying to bring forth business, and that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Tom. Scott, you had mentioned schools also as one of the areas that you felt were important. Do you want to comment related to the schools? What your thinking was?
Just as far as the town being as supportive as they can possibly be to the schools, I know our mayor does a lot as far as education to the children down on the river, and I know the town works really well with the school. I would like to see the continuance of the school resource officer, I think that's really, really important. I know, I think the grant runs out in two years for that school resource officer, and I would really like to see either another grant or possibly an auxiliary police office up at the school, so instead of the officer on duty going back to the location here in historic Clarkdale, they could actually go to the school. But I think it's really, really important to have that armed police presence at the school.
Richard, anything you'd like to add to that relative to schools?
Well, I always tell everyone that all the kids in Clarkdale are above average, and it seems to be true, from what I've heard.
Is that true everywhere?[1427.42][1427.42](laughter)
No, only in Clarkdale.[1429.83][1429.83](laughter) It's a strange phenomenon. You know, the town and the school district, of course, are two different entities, but, you know, we're just as supportive as we can possibly be and cooperate on programs, and our library is an important source of access to information for the kids. It's a safe place to stop after school and do your homework. And so we try to be as supportive as we can be of our education system.
Okay. I have a question that, from the audience, that says, you know, Clarkdale is a very historic place. How do you feel as a council member that you can support historic preservation in Clarkdale? And would you support the formation of a Historic Preservation Commission? Tom, do you want to start?
Well, I've been working with the Historic Preservation Group for past two or three years. They have my uniform in there, they have my military uniforms we've given them, and radios from the police department that were outdated and outmoded. It is a great little place. You go on that, like on Veterans Day, on the different months they used to do different events. I mean, they must have 200, 300 people a week go through there, even citizens. The town, not anymore?[1516.42][1516.42](laughter) No, I'm sorry, I took that year off, I'm sorry. Yeah, but I really believe it's important. I mean, when I was on the patrol, everybody used to tell me I was one of the best realtors selling this town.
So how could you support that if you're a council member?
You're going to support it by going there and joining in and volunteering, and then you're going to get out and you're going to publicize it and let people know on your Facebook entries and everywhere else that we have a great history here, going all the way back to the 1800s. And as a history nut, I can tell you that Clarkdale is a great town, it's been a great town, it will always be a great town, and it's, our history is so, just drive down Main Street and look at the three or four styles of houses Mr. Clark put in. Go out to Pex Lake, look at the lake, which when I grew up, we called it a pond, you know? But there's so much history throughout our town, and better close down, I'm at 30 seconds.
That's okay. Richard, how can you, as a council member, support historic preservation? And would you support the formation? It sounds like you don't have a formal Historic Preservation Commission. Would you support the formation of that?
Well, we actually have a very robust and effective historical society. I'm not sure what the name of it is, because I think it's changed, but they help run the museum, and...
A historic preservation commission? That would have to come from the town.
No, no, I know that, but I know it's not. Excuse me if I misspoke.
I'm sorry.
I understand that it's not part of the town government, but it's certainly a valuable asset to the community, and we love the work that they're doing, including putting on our annual shootout outside the bank, which draws a lot of attention and is a lot of fun to do. But my, when I, from the very first time, first moment I got the idea of running for the town council, one of the reasons that I really wanted to be able to participate is because I think that our historic district, these old buildings that we have there that are so beautiful and so much a part of Clarkdale that give it the sort of sense of place that it has, if somebody doesn't use them, they're going to fall apart and fall down, and they won't be there anymore. And so it's been my idea since I started on the council to encourage historic preservation as an economic development tool, and economic development as an historic preservation tool. So I think the two go hand in hand. Unless the, unless we find ways to use our old buildings, we won't be able to enjoy even looking at them anymore.
Okay.
I live in a 102-year-old house, so I'm all in favor of historic preservation.
All right, Scott, do you want to comment?
I work in a 98-year-old building, so that's not as fun as living in a 102-year-old house, I don't think. I think that the town really embraces the history of Clarkdale, and I guess the biggest example of that would be our old-fashioned Fourth of July parade. A lot of times, you feel like you're actually living in the past when you're living in Clarkdale. So I think that the town and its staff and the council really supports the history here in Clarkdale. There's signage on the sidewalks explaining the buildings in Clarkdale. So I truly believe that the entire staff and the council is supportive and embraces the history, the mining history here in Clarkdale.
Okay, I really appreciate that. However, I think that the audience person who asked this question really wants to know if you would support the formation of a Historic Preservation Commission, which I know we have in Sedona, and it operates as an appointed group, and they have very specific guidelines that they follow related to the state's operating of a Historic Preservation Commission. So I guess it's a yes or no answer. I know you support what the historic society is doing, but would you support the formation of a Historic Preservation Commission? Why don't we start with you, Tom?
Yes, ma'am. I think they should appoint one that's going to continue, because all of us that believe in what's going on today is not going to be there tomorrow, and the next ones that walk in may not want to do it. We need to put somewhere in government a protectional device, which would be this commission. commission.
Okay. Thank you very much. Richard, what's your thought on that?
I'm not sure that I'd want to say yes, I would support the creation of such a commission. For one thing, I think that we have good organization, volunteer organizations that are doing the work that a commission might want to take or might be appropriate for. And secondly, when you create a commission that's an official part of the town government, then you're requiring it to follow a lot of protocol and things that maybe isn't the most productive way to get the problem solved. And it takes staff time to support these commissions. And we, our staff is so busy and puts in so many hours that I would hesitate to give them one more commission to support by setting up the meeting places and taking the notes and providing the agendas and whatever else might be required. So I think between our Parks and Rec or our Community Services Commission and our volunteer Historic Society, I think we do a pretty good job.
Thank you. Scott, what would your point of view on that be?
I definitely have to agree with the vice mayor on this. I would have to certainly see the financial impacts on the town of actually appointing that, the society, not the society, but the preservation. You know, the town has done so much to trim so much away. And again, I think the people of Clarkdale are, is what really makes this town, and the people are the ones doing the preservation. Just like we don't, we don't have an official Chamber of Commerce, we have a downtown Business Alliance that's formed by the people. So while we may not have a, I'm sorry, what's the technical term?
Historic Preservation Commission.
We may not have a commission, we do have that Historical Society that's doing the same work without putting huge financial stress on the town and the people of the town.
Okay, thank you very much. Next question. The vice mayor said that the town's biggest challenge would be attracting new staff and staff retention. Could you all please tell us what qualities you would seek in new staff members for the Clarkdale of today? Scott, why don't you start?
Well, definitely, I think, small-town oriented people with larger goals. I like the idea of succession planning in getting interns in and training them to become town managers or whatever position they might need to fill, department heads. I definitely like the idea of promoting from within. But I definitely think somebody that is small-town oriented to keep our small-town feel, but understands growth, but not quick growth. So Clarkdale needs to grow, but we don't need to grow quickly. So somebody that's patient, somebody that's fiscally responsible, and yeah, somebody that supports the town.
Okay. Tom?
Can you repeat it one more time?
Yes. What would you, the vice mayor said that the town's biggest challenge would be attracting new staff and staff retention. Could you tell us what qualities you would seek in new staff members?
Again, that would be up to the town manager who does that. She designs and sets up the deal. But as a citizen, I'd like to see them be living inside the city limits, town limits. I would like to see them want to live in the town limits. I'd like to see them be small-town oriented, as Scott has said, that they don't come here with their big-town goals. You can bring your big-town education and experience, but you turn it into how we use it in Clarkdale and what we want to do in Clarkdale. The staffing today is already looking forward in the hiring process. They have one of the best hiring processes. I've stole it from my volunteer deal. We don't do a one-phase interview and hire people. We do a three-phase hiring thing that we do an interview, we walk with them the next day and walk through their work period, and then the next time, we let them work on their own. And similar, the town takes you in, they took us through physical fitness for police officers, for example, because you have to be physically fit to do the police job. Then you turn around from that, if you made it here, you written tests, and you did evaluation. They have an interview process that is just great. And then you take a background check, and it's ahead of the times of the entire valley. Watching it through the hiring of the sergeants last year, hiring of the sergeants, and I think it's going to continue to get better. But again, I really believe that the hiring and the goals of the hiring is in the town manager's eyes.
Thank you. And vice mayor, since those were your words?
Well, Tommy's right about that, and that's one of the reasons that I want to serve another term. Because within the next four years, we really have a lot of the key members of our management team who are going to be eligible to retire. And having retired in February, I'm going to encourage anybody who can to do it. It's wonderful. But Tommy's right, that the only person we hire is the town manager. And I don't think that we want to, although Gail has always been great about inviting members of the council to sit in on interviews with some of the key people that she's hired, it's always been her decision. And so, I don't think we want to, we want to know what's going on, but we don't want to interfere with that. And so, we need to find, you can't find another Gail Library, you know? It's, we're not going to be able to do that. But someone who...
So what would you look for in that role if you were hiring?
I'd look for someone just like Gail. But, you know, someone with a level of professionalism, ethics, and, you know, it's, when you get to be as old as I am and you've been involved with business, I've owned my own businesses and I've hired people, you kind of get a sense of what people are about. You have to kind of get that feeling that this is somebody I'd want to work with. So it's part logical, it's part about the requirements of the job and qualifications, but there's some gut feeling that goes into it too. And, you know, hopefully those feelings are correct most of the time.
Thank you. Scott, did you comment on this one already?
I did.
Okay. Several of you mentioned in your opening statements water challenges. And I wondered if you could comment on what you see as the water challenge in Clarkdale and what needs to be done about it. Is there someone who would like to go first?
I can try. As a citizen of Clarkdale on the water system, where I live off of Haskell Springs on Black Hills down at the bottom, I have great pressure, you know? And I have great water, it's always clear and it tastes good. But you get into the old town, and they talk, their pipes are old, and I think Garrison sold us bill of goods when he sold us all this. And it's going to take a lot of drive from the town. They're working on it right now, getting new water lines put in, sewer lines put in, reclaiming the water. If you go down in the bottom of the, by the train station, they're using reclaimed water there. And it's just going to continue to get better. My main concern again is, where's the water going to go in a few years? If we keep bringing people in, there's going to run out of water. And it's going to restrict us more that live here, but that's going to become, I mean, I haven't seen phase two or phase three incorporated in the 10 years of the water.
Okay, thank you. Richard, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, in the time that I've been on the council, the town has definitely improved its water system and distribution system. We've been able to replace all the old lines down in lower Clarkdale, and we're marking the places on the alley right now where the rest of them are in upper town. So that'll be a big advantage, not only because we don't want to see brown water, but because those lines were leaky, and we were losing thousands and thousands of gallons of water that we didn't get to sell to customers and, or people, you know, didn't get to use. So we've done a lot just to tighten up our own ship to make sure that we're not wasting water. And then again, you know, one of the big things that we've done, I never thought I'd be so proud to have my name on a sign outside of what I think of as a sewer plant, but these days, they are wastewater treatment facilities. But it says right on there that we built this new wastewater treatment facility. I talked earlier about how we're now putting out A-plus effluent, but what I forgot to mention was, again, the innovation that Clarkdale is proud of. We bought a used wastewater treatment system, moved it up here, it was refurbished, and we saved $8 million by doing that. So not only did we improve the quality of the effluent that we're putting out, we saved $8 million. And not only are we getting rid of brown water, we're saving the water that we want to keep instead of letting it leak. So we're making, we're doing a lot. Now that we have A-plus effluent, we're looking into ways to use that to produce, the mayor, as a matter of fact, is measuring temperatures and things all around the town's property down there in Fitter Creek to see if it'd be something that Vintners would be interested in using, is it the right climate for that? And can we use some of our water to do that? Thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
Yeah, I think one of the biggest things that we can do to reduce the use of water in Clarkdale is education and just kind of educating the people that live in town. I know that the school's doing a really good job with the students up there. I believe it starts in fifth grade and goes through eighth. And also, zero escaping for houses. I know we have the remediation program right now, and I'd like to see, or I would hope that a lot of people would go to zero escaping versus lawns and trees and that kind of stuff. And I think, you know, the A-plus effluent is huge. I would like to see A-plus effluent in the park and the baseball field and anywhere that it's safe to use effluent, which I guess A-plus effluent is even safe to drink, but I don't want to drink it quite yet. But anywhere we can get that effluent to, I would like to see that effluent used.
Thank you. Does anyone in the audience have a question without writing it on a card? I don't mind if you ask it, I'll repeat it. Since we're being filmed, it's easier. Any questions? Okay, I have one more here, which is, what would you like Clarkdale to look like in 10 years? Who would like to start?
Well, I'd like to see Clarkdale look just like it does today. I don't want to see it changed, the street, and the attitudes, walking down the street, talking to people, you know? I want to see that, I ran a construction business for years back in Kansas renovating homes of this generation, and you walk into a brand-new home and it's really an 80-year, 90-year-old home on the outside, but you've got all the luxuries on the inside, you know? And Clarkdale has this atmosphere. I mean, we've been on Arizona highways, we've been in the news for the good stuff. We don't go in the news for the bad stuff. The roadways could be repaired, and that's, you know, that comes with funding, and they've got it in a system to do that. But overall, the town needs to stay the same except for internal things. The operation can change, the internal, the hiring process can change, but the town, to me, needs to stay the same. It's what it's here, it's the history. Knock all those houses down, put in a sub, little village or something, it's not going to be the same Clarkdale as we grew up and lived in.
Thank you. Scott, would you like to comment?
Yeah, in 10 years, I'd certainly like to see agriculture, especially vines, the wine industry's thriving here in the Verdi Valley, and there's very, very little land that they actually grow grapes on here in the Verdi Valley. Most of the Verdi Valley wines, the grapes are being grown down in southern Arizona in Wilcox. So I'd like to actually see a local Clarkdale appellation for wines, again with that A-plus effluent. And I'd love to see the historic district of Clarkdale remain exactly the same. I would love to see Mountain Gate completely built, and I'd really like to see that 89A corridor with more options for residents of Clarkdale to be able to spend our money here in Clarkdale and keep our tax dollars local in Clarkdale. And again, pharmacies, maybe a little bit more of a grocery store than Dollar General, although I'm not complaining about Dollar General, I love it. But maybe a few more options for Clarkdale residents to spend their money here in Clarkdale and, again, increase our tax revenue to improve those streets and to do the things that a small town needs to do.
Okay. Richard? 10 years.
10 years, well...
Crystal ball.
In 10 years, I would like to see Clarkdale's business community grow to the point where it can support the town with a sales tax that really is what we need. We need more sales tax coming in. We, I don't think, if anybody wants me to lead the town to beat 20,000 people in 10 years, don't vote for me, because that's not my goal. And I don't think anybody in Clarkdale wants us to grow that fast. What's, what's, what makes sense, you know, that's our town motto, a place that makes sense. So if it makes sense, if it sticks to the values that we all, as Tommy so eloquently stated, that we all love about Clarkdale, and it can help the town grow to the point of being healthier than it is, then I'm in favor of it. But, you know, we don't need to try to change it from what it is to something else. We all like it the way it is. There are things about it that could improve. We need more businesses here. We need a better tax base from those businesses. And we need more services for our citizens, like Scott was saying, you know, I don't want to have to drive to Cottonwood to get a jar of pickles. And so, that's where we're at. We kind of, do they have pickles now at Dollar General?
Oh, yeah. Fantastic pickle selection.
I got to get all my pickles at Dollar General from now on, I promise.
I think our TV producer's going to charge you for this commercial for Dollar General. Okay, question concerning transportation. You know, Clarkdale is kind of out here on the end, and you've got a lot of information going on at the other forums that we've been at related to transportation. Where does Clarkdale fit into the transit scheme of the Verdi Valley or not? So, Richard, do you want to start on that one?
Well, I think we're tremendously fortunate to have the CAT services available for our residents here in Clarkdale. And we appreciate the cooperation and the relationship that we have with the city of Cottonwood to help bring their transit system up here. And now, with the completion of the Yavapai Apache Transit System, you can get on a public transit bus here in Clarkdale, and you can go to Camp Verdi. You can, you know, go to the Greyhound bus station, get on a bus and go to Phoenix. It's pretty amazing, and it's for a community this size to have that available to us, and hopefully, as more people use it, it'll get better. We really appreciate the fact that we have those vans running six days a week right by my house, and they're on time every time they go by. So people can depend on them to get to work, they can depend on them to get to appointments. And hopefully someday, they won't have to depend on them to go shopping in Cottonwood, but we're working on that.
Great, thank you. Tom, would you like to comment on that?
Well, you know, Richard said it all. I mean, CATS has been a part of the community for over 20 years, and now it's linked into Lynx, and the Yavapai Apache Nation has joined in. And not only can you just get to Camp Verdi, you can get to Sedona. I mean, you just, I mean, we have such a public transportation for such a small little town. And the town, I think, still pays a share for that every year so that our citizens have a better and lower rate to drive, to ride. I don't know what it is now, I wrote it in years, I was one of their volunteer drivers 20 years ago. And, you know, I used to pick up the Cottonwood School kids to bring them to Clarkdale because their parents didn't like Cottonwood School. Pick up the Clarkdale kids that didn't like Clarkdale, take them to Cottonwood for three years. And that system works. It starts around 7:00 in the morning, it doesn't quit, I think now, until about 7:00 or 8:00 at night. Then you got the reservation, the casino will even come out and pick you up and take you out to the casino, and it doesn't just stop there. It'll stop in Camp Verdi, and you can eat a dinner and have a nice dinner in Camp Verdi, get on, go to Lynx, have a nice dinner in Sedona. I mean, it is better than it's ever been in 20 years.
Thank you very much. Scott, anything you'd like to add to that in terms of transportation needs for citizens of Clarkdale?
Yeah, I agree with both the... Yeah, I, I agree with both the Vice Mayor and Tommy, but I, I would like to see CAT and all the services run just a little bit later. There's a lot of young people in town that are working, that can't afford a vehicle, and they have a really hard time getting home from one of the more popular jobs in the Verde Valley, and that's the restaurant business. There's a lot of, lot of restaurant employees. And I know Sedona as well has a lot of people in the food service industry and in the hospitality in general, and sometimes those jobs tend to not be nine-to-five, people get off a little bit later. So it's nice, I, I have several employees that, that utilize the CAT system to get to work, but getting back home from work is a bit challenging for them, so I would actually like to see those hours for CAT extended. And I think that there's actually a demand, I mean, I have six employees and two of my employees, so a third of my employees would benefit from that actually running longer. So I know that there's other people Verde Valley-wide that would probably benefit from those hours being extended. But other than that, I mean, I think we have a fantastic public transit system.
Thank you very much. Any questions yet from the audience? Okay, I have another question for you. In terms of your population, Scott, you mentioned the young people who need all of this. So much of the Verde Valley is made up of people who are retired and are seniors and need a lot of services, and I'm wondering, in the town of Clarkdale, or the city of Clarkdale, is there, are you a town or a city? Town of Clarkdale, it sounded right. In the town of Clarkdale, are there services for the senior population that you feel are missing and are important, or what ideas would you have for that part of your population? Or are they all fine? I mean, what's needed?
Um, well, I think, I think the biggest thing that Clarkdale offers senior citizens is peace and quiet. It's a, it's a quiet town, it's a nice place, as Richard said, he's now retired, it's a nice place to retire, but we also have that nice mix of families. So it's not predominantly, young families and young children are not predominantly retired people, well, I guess it is, predominantly retired people. But I, I think Clarkdale just offers people a nice place to, to live and relax after they've worked hard their entire life.
So are there any services you think they need that they're not getting?
I, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. Richard, do you want to comment?
Well, yeah, I, I hope that our seniors feel that the services they need are available to them. I work, I represent the town at the Northern Arizona Council of Governments, Regional Council, and part of NACOG is the Area Agency on Aging, and they are providing services here in Clarkdale and throughout the Verde Valley that are essential to a lot of folks' welfare. We, here in Clarkdale, are, have good access to the Verde Valley Senior Citizen Center, even though it's in Cottonwood, it's a, a resource for a lot of our folks. They deliver meals here in Clarkdale, so we shouldn't have any senior citizens going hungry. And I think, you know, one of the things that's, I think, good for senior citizens is to be around young people. And when you go to the park, like the last Saturday night, we had that concert in the park, and there were people there from two years old to a hundred and two years old, dancing and having a great time together. So I think we have a healthy mix of young families and old codgers and retirees like Tommy.
Okay, Mr. Nestor, would you like to add to that?
You know, I tell you, the Senior Center is one of the best places for some of our retirees, they go and have their lunch every day.
In Cottonwood?
In Cottonwood. Our seniors here enjoy this town. You see them walking early in the morning, late at night, they don't have to have a fear somebody's going to come up and mug them or beat them over the head in the town of Clarkdale. I mean, we're the second safest city this year. Two years ago, we were the third safest city in Arizona, and we, you know, the only thing left is first, and we've got to get Camp Verde out of there somehow. Our citizens.
Florence.
Yeah. This is one of the greatest places to live for our senior citizens. I have the, I mean, I'm a senior citizen, I have a teenager at home, and most of my neighbors to my right are in their early thirties, and they have the little ones, they were all going to school when I was school resource, and down the street I have the eighty-year-olds that, you know, come by, and we go out and help them do things. And the neighborliness of Clarkdale, I mean, you call and ask your neighbor for a ride, he's going to give you a ride. They're going to take you to the services over in Cottonwood, they're going to take you to your doctor's appointments. This is one of the best communities I've ever lived, and I've lived from all over the world.
Thank you very much. Okay, as a small community, partnerships are really important, they're critical. What are some examples of the most important partnerships that Clarkdale has, and are there any that you think should be strengthened?
I can tell you that the partnership in the police world is probably one of the best there is. We're partnered with Jerome, we have mutual aid agreement between the entire Verde Valley. If we need help, they come, if they need help, we go. You turn around and the towns work well together, Cottonwood, Clarkdale, Jerome, the mayor's on a couple of councils with them, the managers and them have meetings together and talk at the League of Cities and Towns to help the, the entire city grow. Do I think there's need for more? We need more partnerships. I mean, the greatest partnership, one of our partnerships, we didn't lose, we kind of moved them all to Verde Grove, but they're still here and they're still one of our partners. And we've got to stay on top of that to keep them our partners, because it's a hard-working effort to maintain friends and partners once you get them. We have a good relationship with the state. I mean, I don't know how many times I've seen the town get awards for finances and working that it does real well. So yes, I think we have great partnerships, and we just need to maintain the ones we have and grow with some that, as the community grows bigger, we're going to need better. There's a tips program I pushed for years where that the police department and senior citizens have a list of who they are, what they need in event of an emergency, and those are the kind of partnerships we need to really work on.
Thank you. Richard?
Well, we, in addition to the ones Tommy's mentioned, I won't repeat those because those are all important, but some others that I can think of is our, for instance, our partnership with Freeport-Mackinac to allow us to lease the land that we use for the Lower Tapco River Access Point, and we're hoping to be able to expand that relationship as more services come online. Our partnership with State Parks for the Verde River at Clarkdale, and we also have a good partnership with Tuzigoot in that develop, in the use of those lands down there. Our partnership, well, Tuesday night at our council meeting, we had a great program, I thought, of course, I was the one that asked for this program to come before that, so I thought it was really good. But we have a new program that started in February in which our police department is partnering with Spectrum Healthcare, and Spectrum Healthcare is the behavioral health services provider for this area as well as primary care. And so now, when our police department encounters someone that they feel is in need of immediate help with their mental health, they can call Spectrum and in, from what they told us Tuesday night, as little as ten minutes, a master's-level therapist is there. So instead of getting arrested and going to jail, people get hooked up with behavioral health treatment, and it's working. I think that one of the numbers that April gave us Tuesday night, and this is a valley-wide number, it's not just exclusive to Clarkdale, but we were one of the agencies that really helped get this rolling by being cooperative, ninety people since February who would have gone to jail, didn't go to jail, and are getting the services that they need. So that's good.
Okay. Scott, would you like to add to that? Are there partnerships that are very strong and others that should be strengthened or new ones?
Sure, I think these guys hit the nail on the head with, with most of them. Another, one partnership that I would like to see strengthened a little bit would be our, our partnership with Arizona Game and Fish. We've got a tremendous resource down there in the Verde River, and I know they do stock at Tuzigoot, but I would love to see them, Game and Fish, get a little bit more involved with the Verde River at Clarkdale section, just as far as maybe trail-type systems down there with identification of animals and birds and stuff like that, maybe doing a little bit of habitat improvement down there on nesting waterfowl and other things like that. But, but I think these guys covered, you know, the state parks and National Park Service with Tuzigoot and everything else, so.
Okay, thank you. Throughout the Verde Valley, one of the big questions is, how do you get people out of their cars? How do you separate them from their cars so that there isn't as much traffic throughout the whole area? But as far as Clarkdale is concerned, how do you separate people from their cars? Can you? Is that a realistic possibility?
A lot of our traffic is coming from...
Go to the mic.
A lot of our traffic is drive-through going up to Jerome. I mean, I'm trying to remember the numbers from when I wrote the grants, but, you know, there's probably thirty thousand to forty thousand cars drive-through a week, if not weekend, and you're not going to get them. They're going to Jerome to a specific place for a specific event. Same thing, we have a lot of traffic down on Broadway. When I was still with the police department, I think that was the number two, you know, the number-two busiest town-owned roadway, and that was people going mainly to the train station and coming to Clarkdale to go to work, the town staff. You know, the number-one was Black Hills going up to go to the college at that time, and the number-one real road, but it doesn't belong to Clarkdale's 89A, but the ones that belonged to us. And getting those people to stop, short of getting out and putting up a police barricade, they're going to one specific place. Inside the town is, I mean, you've got Scott's business there on Main Street, you've got to get some more businesses on Main Street, get more advertisement out, get them to stop when they get out of the train stations. Jokingly, for years, I used to suggest that they put a priority road, it's a European thing, a priority road coming out of the train station that drove you through Clarkdale. And, you know, you couldn't take the left and go back to Cottonwood, and that would bring all sorts of traffic into the town of Clark, or Clarkdale, and they could stop, they'd see Sukasa. Even to this day, I recommend Sukasa and all the restaurants to everybody. I mean, the main street's my favorite chicken and salad, you know, but getting them to come out is just hard.
Okay, thank you. Scott, do you want to comment on that in terms of, can you get people out of their cars, and do you want to?
Are we, are we talking like, get them into public transit or riding a bike?
Yes.
Type thing?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what it means in the rest of the Verde Valley, and I think that's what the question intends.
Okay, yeah, I was a little, boy, I don't know, it, it definitely would be challenging. I don't know if I could comment on that.
Okay. Richard, do you have a comment for that?
Yeah, I, I think it's, you know, it's a noble cause to get people out of their cars, and, and I think that, you know, Clarkdale again is one of those places where we've kind of, over the years, done the right thing. We've done everything we can do to make Clarkdale's streets and sidewalks pedestrian-friendly. We had one grant that was going to put a pedestrian walkway all the way up to, all the way up Clarkdale Parkway, and unfortunately, that one didn't work out. But the plans are still there, and when we have the money, we'll do it. But, you know, our, our partnership with Cottonwood to provide transit helps people, gives people the ability to go places without their cars. Now, whether they choose to do that or not is, is up to them, and we can only provide the, the facilities, we, we can't make people use them.
Thank you very much. And does anyone have a question they want to ask, a burning question?
Can I do a follow-up to that?
Yes.
What about the roadway going into Cottonwood with the bike lane? There really isn't a bike lane, it doesn't feel safe. Is there any plan to do anything with that?
Any plan to do anything with the roadway going toward Cottonwood as far as bike lanes?
Just Broadway or 89A?
Broadway.
Not to my knowledge. I know there's one extra-wide area that we've talked about for years over near Bent River, but to my knowledge, I don't know. Richard, do you?
Well, I, I'm not sure that we have a specific plan for all the way down Broadway. We do have plans to improve the intersection at Broadway and Main, and I think that might be the incentive to make Broadway wider and, and more pedestrian-friendly and perhaps, yeah, put in some bike lanes and things like that. It takes a lot of money, and we, we get a lot out of the money we have, but we can't have everything we'd like. So that should be part of the long-range plan, and I, and I, and I think in our community plan, that might be, that is part of, part of the general plan for the town, is to make that a much wider, safer thoroughfare.
Scott, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I mean, I guess just, like, not, not incentivizing people to get out of their cars, but the Red Wine Line comes to mind as far as taking that transit. You can go to almost every wine tasting room in the Verde Valley on that, that, the CAT transit, or like Tommy said, going up to Sedona and having dinner. So, so making the public transit go to places that people actually want to go, the casino, you know, so instead of just kind of a regular bus route, but, and, and maybe advertising those things. I know Clarkdale's trying to get this Red Wine Vine going with Jody. Red, Red Wine Line?
Sounds like it.
Red Wine Line, that's what it is. So, yeah, and definitely getting it out to people that, hey, you don't have to drive, especially while you're tasting wine, or when you go to the casino, you don't necessarily have to take your vehicle.
Okay, one last question, unless anyone in the audience has one you want to ask? Would you like to ask?
I've just wondered, you really talk too much about hiking trails and the establishment thereof. Is that another costly?
Okay, the question is concerning hiking trails. I just want to make sure that it's on there, because the audience doesn't have mics.
Sure, I'll start. I guess the only thing I can think of is the Big Springs Natural Area that was, that was just done. Did you mean like, like in-town type hiking trails or?
Accessible.
Anywhere close to the river where we have this beautiful river, and we don't always have access at that point.
Well, I think, I think the access right now is at the, the Big Springs Natural Area, and there is, did we come up with a name for that trail?
The Benatz Trail.
The Benatz Trail.
That's different.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else have a comment concerning trails and the possibility of developing more?
Well, you know, you have a trail here on Clarkdale Parkway going up, but it hadn't been maintained in several years, and so it got filled in. We have the trail down in where the old railroad tracks was, you know, then there's a trail out around Pex Lake, but we've closed it off with, you know, we've got to reopen that someday. I know that, I believe the mayor's working on something to get something done in there and put it back on the map for our use.
Would that be part, I don't know what the general plan is on this, not, would that be part, could that be part of the general plan?
I think it is.
Well, we already have a number of trails, and, and there are more in the general plan. But there's been a quiet agent, a quiet group of people for years now called the, the Verde Front, and this is a, people from cities, from the county, from the Forest Service, from state parks, from fishing wildlife, from all kinds of different private groups and public groups who have quietly been conspiring to have a network of trails that go from the Verde River to the mountains all over the Verde Valley. And, and there's, some of them are already established, and there will be a lot more when, when the funding becomes available. But, yeah, that's, that's an idea that people have really taken off and run with, and Clarkdale's been an important part of that group.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the audience? Okay, then I think at this point, we will ask you each to do a two-minute wrap-up of why you are asking Clarkdale residents for their vote and why you think you deserve it. We started, I believe, on this, well, who did we start with, number one? We started with you. Who was number three? We'll start with you, and then two, and then one.
Oh, my goodness, I'm first. I'd like to ask the Clarkdale citizens to write my name, Nestor, Tommy, not Tommy Nestor on the ballot, and, because I am your writing candidate. I love this town, I'll do a good job. candidate. I love this town. I'll do a good job for this town. I did it for the years I worked for the town. I will continue. I volunteer. I'm family-oriented. My kids have been here since they were 10 and 12, and they're now 35 and 33. And then I have a 17-year-old going to school. The only child I don't have that, or I have that doesn't, hasn't gone to school here is 43, and she lives in Mississippi with her husband and my two grandkids there. I was part of the community for those 11 years. I'm still part of the community, and I just want to ask you for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard?
Thank you, Barbara. And I want to apologize for having the sniffles tonight. I, I went to Prescott today, and for some reason, there's something growing on that side of the mountain that just irritates my allergies, something awful. But thank you all for being here tonight to come out and, and listen to what we all had to say. I hope it was helpful in making your decisions. I, I would like to have your vote for Clarkdale Town Council. I think there's a lot of good work that's been done, but there's unfinished work to be done. And I'd like to be part of that. I think it's gonna be a really, really crucial four years for Clarkdale. It's going to, there are gonna be a lot of changes. And so I would like to see the things that we've started, see them through, and get started on a new generation of leadership.
Thank you, Richard. Scott?
Yeah, I'm asking for your vote tonight because I, I feel like I have a lot invested in Clarkdale. And with owning two businesses and having three children at school, both my wife and I work here in Clarkdale, I, I have a lot, a lot riding on this town, and I want to see good things happen to it. I think I'm sort of the voice of the business community in this town, and certainly the, the voice of the younger family in this town. And I think I bring a really good perspective to an older council. Is that acceptable? I don't, they're all fantastic. They're all great. I'm trying not to, not to, not to go there, but, but I'm trying not to, to be offensive. I mean, the council is absolutely fantastic. We all work great together the way it is. But there is an upcoming election. So anyway, I, I think that I bring a different perspective to the council. I have different focuses in my life than a lot of the other council members right now that may or may not be retired.
Okay, thank you very much. And let's give a hand to all of our candidates this evening.
Thank you.
And so you may already have your ballot, or you may be going to the polls on August 30th. And remember the names, Scott Buckley, Richard Daynard, Tommy Nestor. And look for it and cast your ballot, okay? Please let everyone you know, make sure that they are registered for, if not this election, because it's too late for this one. But certainly the November election, which as we all know, is gonna be a very exciting election, not only nationally, but on a state level, every single state legislator is up for election. Some of them will be decided in the August 30th primary because there is no one from the opposing party running, so they won't make it to the general election. So your vote really counts in the August 30th primary, but of course, in the November election as well. So on behalf of the League of Women Voters and all of us that are here from the League today, we'd like to thank you for joining us, and thank you to all of the candidates. Appreciate it. Thank you.